All right, everybody, welcome to the... Welcome to the regular town council meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, September 17th, 2018. Let's see, who am I gonna pick on today? Oh, wow. Councilwoman-elect Royer, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Or have I picked on you before already?
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public announcements? I don't have anything. Counsel? No? Call to the public. Do we have any... We don't have any forms to start off with? Cool. Town manager.
So I received notice from the town marshal and the building official, there was a fire this afternoon at the village apartments, and some structural damage. Two of the renters are needing to be relocated. It was not a large area of damage, but there's some structural damage that will need some engineering to come in and take a look at before it can be repaired and have those apartments safe for renters to return. The town had its first commercial filmed by Channel 12. They were doing an A to Z midday show where the commercial will air. They'll be featuring Cave Creek as they do other communities in the valley. And that, eventually, we'll have a copy of that commercial, and we will provide a looped feed in the tourism bureau. So folks coming into the office there will be able to look at that. And it promoted the outdoor lifestyle, our hiking, biking, and horseback riding in the community was this particular commercial feature. Saturday, October 29th, will be the homecoming parade that morning, just a heads up to the community. And last but not least, the Taste of Cave Creek is coming up quickly, October 17th and 18th, and we are looking for volunteers. Actually, for three days, we could use some volunteers to help set up on the 16th, if you've got a strong back and can be out in the sun. But the 17th and 18th, the evenings, we also are in need of volunteers. So if you are interested, or just have questions on what you might be able to do to help out in terms of volunteering for the event, please contact Marshal Stein. And if you call Town Hall, the main line, 488-1400, we'll be able to get the information to the marshal and put that all together. That's all I have for right now.
All right. Consent agenda? No items? I guess we're gonna pass that really quick. General agenda items. Agenda item number one is a council discussion, possible approval of First Read Ordinance Number 2018-02, amending the town of Cave Creek subdivision code, Section 2.3, entitled Preliminary Plat. You want me to do it, or you wanna do it?
Mayor, members of council, sorry, thank you. I'm so glad she's here. I'd never... When I took off with jets, I'd always forget to do that, too. So I'm glad Carrie's here. We've gone through an iterative process. The planning commission had proposed some language. We briefed you in e-session tonight about some options for learning from current development that is currently pending before the town, for example, the Hampton Inn project, and how we can learn from those experiences to make sure that the ordinances correctly give you flexibility without opening a Pandora's box to uncapped use. You've given us some good guidance. We will have a draft out back to you all by the end of the week to have a first read at the next council meeting.
Okay, so we're...
Table?
Yeah, need a motion to... We wanna table, or we wanna move it, just a date certain?
Continue October 1st.
Continue, yeah.
Okay, continuance. Well, we're gonna table and then bring it back, October 1st.
I'm motion to continue October 1st.
That's motion I move to place in.
Yep. Okay, we have a second on that?
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Ayes clearly have it. Agenda item number two, council discussion, possible approval of First Read Ordinance Number 2018-03, amending the town of Cave Creek zoning code, Section 12.3, entitled Applications, General Provision, Section 12.5, entitled Review Criteria. And once again, Mr. Sims, the advisor...
Exactly the same. The two travel together. We will bring back you, ready for first read at the next council meeting.
Okay, so we get a motion to continue?
Same motion to continue October 1st.
Second. We have a first, and we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Ayes clearly have it. Moving on to agenda item number three, council discussion, approval of site plan SPR-18-04 Jiffy Lube Site Plan Review for One Commercial Building totaling approximately 2,643 square feet of floor area at the northeast corner of 53rd Street and East Carefree Highway. I assume one of you gentlemen sitting there is gonna address us. Mr. councilman.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. SPR-1804 Jiffy Lube Site Plan. The applicant is Victor Olson for Phoenix Design Group. As you mentioned, it's at the northeast corner of North 53rd Street and East Carefree Highway. It's within the Starbucks development there. That property was originally approved for two commercial buildings totaling 12,000 square feet back via SPR-1503, so in 2015. The property has since been subdivided. The pad is... was improved at the time the first building was done. The utilities are all improved up to the pad. This project is... consists of a Jiffy Lube, quick service, car service, totaling 2,600 square feet approximately. The site grading and drainage has all been completed. The site walls are all in place that were... Those were all requirements of that initial site plan approval. Those have been done. The parking area is completed. The parking area lighting is all in. There's no change with that. The commission recommended approval of this case by unanimous vote of six to zero. And with that, I'll take any questions from council. Thank you.
Mr. mayor.
Vice Mayor Silva.
I just basically have one question. As I look at this potential plat, there's six designated parking spaces on the actual Jiffy Lube site to service them. And then, what I consider to be off-site, there's 11 more, which you've identified as spaces seven through 12 and 13 to 17. And that's also, you know, currently in, and it would be used for that existing building that's there now, immediately to the east of Starbucks. My question is, will those additional parking spaces be identified as exclusively used for Jiffy Lube customers, or are they to be shared, first come, first served? I read through your report, I read through the plan commission meeting minutes, and I didn't see any reference to that. So are they gonna be reserved, open, first come, first served, marked, identified? How will that be handled?
Vice Mayor Silva, members of council, the property is actually notched to where it does have quite a bit of parking. There is also a shared parking agreement in place. So it will be treated as first come, first serve. I don't believe that they're gonna go through and paint, you know, each parking stall that this is for this user or this user. But there is a shared parking agreement for that entire center in place.
And whatever goes in the balance of that building, you feel comfortable that there's more than enough parking? The reason I get a little concerned is when I go to Starbucks and I see just about half of this lot, or more, some mornings, already occupied with cars, and the vague... The half of the building that's currently there, you know, is still empty. So it would only exacerbate that situation. So I would ask, is a question, could we so designate or have a stipulation that it would be reserved for Jiffy Lube customers if so needed? I'm thinking years in the future now, not today or tomorrow.
Vice Mayor Silva, when this development came through in different phases, the applicant essentially overparked the site to allow the flexibility with different users into the future. So I don't see a problem with parking. If you would like to propose a condition that eliminates some of that heartburn, then we can draft something.
Or I can hold you personally responsible in perpetuity.
I'll be here for at least a little while longer, yes, yes. I'll be around.
I think it'll work the way it's presented, but I was just curious if steps were gonna be taken to address that. But I think we're fine.
Anything else, Vice Mayor?
No, I'll reserve that for the next one.
Any other questions, council? All right, I guess we're gonna move to the public hearing portion of this. We have any... No? Well, I'll be darned, we're back to council then. Someone wanna make a motion on this?
Motion to approve case number SPR-1804 Jiffy Lube Site Plan Review for a new commercial building totaling approximately 2,643 square feet of floor area within a general commercial GC zone.
Second.
All right. Councilman Smith?
I've been looking for a place to get an oil change for a long time, and that'll be very convenient for me.
Good. Councilwoman Clancy?
Well, I think it's needed up here as well. They do have lower prices than some of the others that are up here, so I think it'll be of value to the community and the surrounding neighbors.
Yeah. Councilman McGuire?
Yeah, I want to note that any chemicals or obnoxious materials, the site is planned such that those will be contained on site and drained.
I've been looking for one of these for a long time. It annoys me to drive all the way down to almost Bell Road to get it done. So this is a good thing. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven, nothing. Let's move on to number four. Council discussion, approval of site plan SPR-18-05 Black Mountain Vista Site Plan for 20 detached dwelling units on 10 parcels in a multiple residential... Residence MR Zone, Planning Department. You again, Luke?
Thank you, mayor, council. Case SPR-1805 Black Mountain Vista Site Plan Review. The applicant is Morgan Taylor Homes. Eric Hillstrom is here on behalf of Morgan Taylor Homes this evening. This case was fun because I got to go back to the 1960s and review how this plat came to be, how this property came to be. It was platted in Maricopa County in 1964, at that time with a zoning designation which allowed for multifamily development. When the town incorporated and adopted its own ordinance, it... At that time, we adopted an MR-43 zone, which would have allowed 43 units per acre. We've since revised all of the numerical designations for multiple residence zones and consolidated them to one MR zone. The applicant is proposing two detached residences, single-story per lot. There are 10 lots total, so that would equate to 20 residential units total. In 2003, the applicant ran dry sewer and extended water service and two meters per each lot. So all of the utilities and infrastructure is in place. The planning commission, we discussed the off-site improvements, particularly for the right-of-way Surrey Road. This... These properties are accessed by Conestoga Trail, which is bound by Surrey Road to the south and Choya Road to the north. They just wanted to make sure that there was a condition in place that allowed the town engineer to determine what right-of-way improvements would be necessary. As you know, if you've driven that road, it's basically a sealed dirt road, like a chip-sealed road at this point. So the town has flexibility to require that of the applicant if it's deemed necessary. With that, the planning commission recommended approval of this case unanimously, subject to the conditions contained in Exhibit D, and that those conditions include the additional condition that the planning commission recommended. And with that, staff can answer any questions, council may have.
Mr. mayor.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Unaccustomed, as I am, to looking at some of these things. I have a few questions, so please put up with me.
You should see the scratches on this one.
I understand there's 10 lots, and there's two buildings per lot. My question is, how will these be deeded over, since they're not attached? For example, if we look at Lot 24, I do... I see where the lot line is for Lot 24, but if I'm buying the building on the north half of Lot 24, how is my deed of trust, or my plat of survey, or my title report going to read? Or will the final plat of subdivision have a lot line going through the center of each of these 10 lots?
Vice Mayor Silva, members of council, this came up during the planning commission review as well. And in initial discussions with the applicant, they considered going lot by lot and doing a lot line adjustment, or a lot split, and creating two parcels out of each. The applicant is looking for the flexibility to where if someone wanted to buy the two residences on the... Buy the lot with the two residences, live in one and rent the other, something along those lines, that they had the flexibility to do so.
Okay, so you will get a title of half a lot, if in fact you only buy one of the units?
If it were to be subdivided later on.
Exactly. Well, I tried to find that in the plan commission notes. I didn't see it, so if it was there, I apologize. The other thing was, I saw mention of Conestoga Trail. I know it's in. I know it's a gravel road. And my question is, what's the status of that? Is it private, public? And then, will it become a private road, or become a public road? And if public, would it require a 20-foot... I'm sorry, a 22-foot dedicated right-of-way to accommodate it? And if so, would there be any requirements for any type of curbing in it, be it ribbon, or rollover, or barrier?
Vice Mayor Silva, the... When the plat was approved in 1964, that was dedicated as a right-of-way when the town incorporated...
I'm sorry, 22 feet?
It's much larger than that. I believe it's a 40-foot right-of-way width there.
It's currently there, recorded?
Yes, yes. As part of the plat, that was recorded in 1964. So the road meanders basically within that right-of-way width. As far as overall improvements, or what it will look like, it will be up to the town engineer to decide as far as full curb and gutter, or just ribbon curb, or what type of road base, any of those things. And that would be up to, like I said, the town engineer, and based off our transportation design guidelines.
Another question. I read in the report where there will be... There's no proposed entrance signs, and there's no onsite retention or detention. So... And since you've just explained that the street will be publicly dedicated, it's not private, I assume then there will be no reason to have an HLA, a homeowners' association. Is that correct?
Vice Mayor Silva, that is correct.
Okay. One little question. It's just, at the south end of Lot 24, there's a little eight-by-eight, or 10-by-10 foot frame structure. What's in there? Is that a pump station, or lift station, or an outhouse, or what?
I believe a representative from the Veras family is here that could answer that. I'm not sure what it is, Vice Mayor Silva.
Well, my concern for asking is, if I were looking at buying Lot 24, the south house on it, would there be any odors emanating from there? That's the reason for my question.
Yeah, I don't believe it's an outhouse.
Well, I didn't mean that, but if it were some sort of a sewer pumping, sanitary sewer pumping station.
That's...
Let's see.
I believe so. Can the owner of the property address...
Mr. Veras, yes, please come up and enlighten us.
Just trying to protect the town's interest in the future, should someone say, "Why didn't you tell me?"
Raymond Veras, Cave Creek, Arizona. Our family subdivided this property in 1964. And that building is a... It was at one time a office and station for the cable company that was initially franchised for the town of Cave Creek.
Oh.
And that's what that building was. And right now, it's just used as a storage shed.
Okay, so no water, no sewer?
No, no. There is electric and telephone and the other, whatever they needed for their... To provide the cable service to the town of Cave Creek at that time.
So, okay, if so approved, it'd be a perfect construction building.
It's acceptable. My understanding is, the buyer... The prospective buyers on this project are probably just gonna demolish it, and it'd be a home site. And in regards to your question, that road is a... It is a dedicated... It's a 50-foot right-of-way.
50 feet?
50 feet. And it is long... Along with the Cave Creek Road, my parents, when they subdivided that, that has a 110-foot right-of-way for the Cave Creek Road at that point, too. That was the widest of anything that was in the county at that time. So...
If I may ask you another question or two?
Sure.
Are the water lines that are currently in, is that within the dedicated right-of-way?
Yes, they are. Yes. That particular water line is still a four-inch transite-type pipe that our family contracted with Jerome George at the time, Cave Creek Water Company. And that was all put into the standards at their time, and on our dollar, by the way.
Yeah. That's all the questions I would have for you, but back to our planning department. In reading the documentation, I understand that they're not... It's... I'm assuming there will or will not be a model home on site. My understanding is that you'll be able to buy one unit, two units, or more. And in reading it, they can either be sold units for sale, or you can buy it with the intent of leasing. Is that correct?
Vice Mayor Silva, yes, that is correct. They... There are, I believe, four... Two different floor plans, and up to four different elevations for each. They're all single-story, each with a two-car garage.
I don't know if you can answer this question, or if Madam Manager will be able to answer it. But if these were to go all rental, would the town be in a position to collect a bed tax on it, since they're rentals, or no?
Vice Mayor, they're required to pay rental.
Okay. Another question I have is, this would be right up here. Not yours, Luke.
Oh, Luke.
If you look at some of these, like on Lot 36, well, Lot 36, 26, 34, 24, you have that big expanse of open space between the units, whereas the other units, lots, do not. Is that just undisturbed open space, or is there some reason for showing it that way? Especially, if you buy half the lot, there would be a lot line through the center of it.
Vice Mayor Silva, the... If you're looking at the cover page of the site plan that shows the entire development, those hatch marks represent the minimum required landscaped undisturbed area of 25%. So they're... In speaking with the applicant, in between the lots and wherever else practical, there would be landscaping.
That would be put in by the quote builder developer, or homeowner?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And maybe in the future, some privacy screen walls and other things like that that aren't shown on here. But besides that, really, the... Like I said, the crosshatching is meant to depict the areas that, by ordinance, shall be landscaped.
Right.
So really, the other areas can be common area, can be landscaped, can have privacy screen fences, patio walls incorporated down the road. So, does that...
Yeah, that explains... And the way I read it, there is no requirement to put in any concrete block wall around the entire area or on each lot.
Correct.
Last question. On Lot 28 and Lot 32, in driving by, there appears to be apartments, and there appears to be, I'm guessing, four apartments in each one of those buildings, with parking in front. And I also read that we've received no notices, good or bad, regarding this subdivision from anybody in the area or in town. Is that still correct?
That is correct. Notice would have been sent out by first-class mail. We post on the website, and we've received nothing from surrounding property owners related to this case.
Thank you. You've done, as usual, a yeoman's job.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I have no more questions, Mr. mayor.
Wow. So his questions brought up a question for me. The two residences on a single lot, someone buys one of... Buys both of them and wants to rent one of them. They gotta register that with the state as a rental property. So how do they do that with... When they're both on the same parcel? And I know you don't have... You're looking at me like... Because I got the same thing... Same look when this dawned on me. Anybody have any ideas on...
I don't think they register with the state.
Or the county, county, I go...
Pardon?
The county, I mean, yeah.
For transaction privilege tax. Yes, that would happen.
Yep, so it would be... Both of them would be included, instead of including the one that they're sitting on, so it's...
Well, no, if you rent your house, you're obligated to pay sales tax on the... And this is who you...
Just that portion of it.
Just be the... It would be one of the two that are rented out.
It's their headache, not ours. Okay.
Because there is a statute that actually prohibits you from expressly licensing. Some jurisdictions were trying to license homes, and so they... The legislature stepped in and said, "No."
Yeah, we should be familiar with that, when that's kind of what messed us up recently.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Any other questions from council? Okay, there is... Let's see here. There is... Let's see here. This one is a public hearing on this one. We'll open that up.
Does that mean...
Well, did you fill out a sheet? Well, come on up.
I've never been here before.
Well, go ahead and step on up.
Okay.
We're gonna hear you.
Hi, I own one of those pieces of property that Vice Mayor Silva talked about. I never got anything in the mail except a notice about tonight. I didn't know anything about this. This gentleman said something was sent out first class. I've never received anything.
Send to the address that's listed with the assessor, but he lists with the assessor for your mail.
I get all my tax bills sent to my address. I've never received anything. So...
Okay. Mail in list here?
Of course I have questions. I have questions about what happens when they're building the road. My name is Ann Heller, H-E-L-L-E-R. Am I going... Are my tenants going to have access? How is that gonna disturb their life? Nobody's addressed that to me.
All of these lots take access from public right-of-way, so their access will not be blocked in any way.
Okay.
They're part of a subdivision.
Okay. But I did not get anything in the mail about this.
Do we have any forms on this one? So we're back to council. Unless we're gonna continue looking down the list. Okay, we're back to council. We have a motion?
This is a motion to...
This is a motion to approve case number SPR 18-05, Black Mountain Business Site Plan for 20 detached dwelling units on 10 parcels in a multiple-residence MR zone.
A second. Councilman? Did you want a second?
I'll be glad to, doesn't matter. Yeah.
Okay, well, go ahead. Councilman McGuire?
This seems like appropriate use for that, that property. Possibility that some of our service people in town can afford to live in Cave Creek.
Nothing more.
No comment? Comments from council?
I...
Oh, Vice Mayor?
I forgot to ask something. Does, do we know what the starting cost would be for the smallest unit, or has nothing been done in that regard?
I, I'm not sure, Vice Mayor Sova. I, did you want to?
Unfortunately, the market will dictate the price.
Well, if, today, in today's dollars, as of today's date, if one were to sell one, assuming one had all of the bids in what would be just a broad brush range?
So, Eric Hellstrom from Morgan Taylor Homes. Wish I could tell you exactly what we could expect for revenue. Unfortunately, the market would dictate that and projecting that we might hit the market in approximately a year. So, all things go well, you could expect values in the $200 square foot range if, if they were to sell.
That's right.
And then if they were to rent, I would expect something in the dollar, dollar 25 range per square foot.
Okay. No, that, that answers my question.
So substantially more than when they planted in 1964. That's what I figured. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second.
Thank you.
Do we have any more comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seven, zero. Wow, we're getting along good tonight. Moving on to agenda item number five. Council discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the outcome of tiny home research, including permitted uses, ordinances, unique code building, and code specification, code amendments, and additional regulations related to establishing criteria for modular home, manufactured home, park model, and tiny home, placed on the agenda by the planning department, it says.
Mayor members of council, I did not.
Mayor members of...
But I'd be happy to answer questions.
Mayor members of council, we had a request, I believe from Councilwoman Wright, for a question about where there, do we have regulations on tiny homes and, you know, what they are? So, we have memos provided by the building and fire official and from the Director of Planning. So, basically, if you look at the building code, a structure under the 2009 building code that we currently operate under, the smallest structure you can build is 120 square feet. And that's a, a, a structure, you know, on a foundation, you know, not on wheels, as opposed to what some folks through television shows see tiny homes on, on wheels. They build these small things. Anything on wheels would be considered an RV. And so, based on the information the Director of Planning provided about RVs, we do allow RVs one per parcel. And we currently do not have zoning, in our zoning regulations, I do not allow for an RV park.
That's correct.
Okay, so should someone want to come in with what you might see on a television show as a tiny home on wheels, it would be considered an RV, and they would be allowed to have one RV on one parcel, and it is not, cannot be the primary residence. So, if someone wanted to live in a tiny home on wheels, we would have to have some change in our regulations to allow something like that. Or if you wanted a group of these small homes on wheels, you, you would normally have regulations allowing for an RV park. Now, back to the building code, should the town council, and we will, we plan to bring this forward in the near future, the next regulation, 2018 regulations for building code, should they be adopted and we operate under those regulations, they have changed the size, the smallest size of a structure to be as small as 70 square feet. So, that's basically the information that we found and researched and provided to you. So, if there's a desire to look into this or to change regulations, we would request that there be a direction to the town manager to either work with the town attorney and staff to pull additional regulations and, and go in the direction that, that council's looking.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager?
Vice Mayor Sova.
Or Mr. Caldwell. If, if someone came in with a tiny home on wheels, and they were to put it on a slab, i.e. a foundation, to where it is now a quote permanent home, I'm going to assume that's not allowed because these, considering it should be an RV, there are no inspections, is my understanding, no inspections on them for electrical, plumbing, anything. Whereas if, as our manager has indicated, someone could build a tiny home of 120 square feet, but on a slab or a stem wall foundation with, with a subfloor, and they would have to get a building permit for it, they would have to have electrical, plumbing, inspections, just like a 10,000-square-foot home. So, again, I'm right in assuming that an RV or a tiny house wheeled into town, put on a slab for a foundation, would not be allowed because no inspections were ever done on it. So, the marshal would go off and kick them off, correct?
Vice Mayor Sova?
Yes.
That it is, sits on a slab, it's still an RV on a slab.
Right.
Right, right.
It would still be allowed as an RV. It would not be allowed as a permanent accessory.
Exactly, and as I recollect, our ordinances, you could only occupy it four months out of a 12-month period?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes, thank you.
Councilwoman Wright?
Yes, Mayor Boncher, I guess. Ian, on this page here, you say, "If a commercial property owner so desired, an application could be filed and processed for a use that would be comprised of tiny homes." So, is that like a mobile home park, or is that allowed?
A hotel would be an allowed use if the applicant wished to operate the property as a hotel with a manager's quarters and five rooms, for example, which would be tiny homes. They would tie into the town sewer and water systems. They would follow the site plan process before the planning commission and council for a use as a hotel.
Thank you.
Other than that, I don't see it as a big issue, so...
We're just sitting here looking at each other. I don't...
Well, I'll make a comment.
Okay, Councilman Smith, please.
I might as well. I see no extreme need to do any changing of any ordinances. I personally do not care for tiny homes on wheels with a drawbar where they can be wheeled around all over the place. It...
Powers.
It, it, it is not something that would accrue to the benefit of the town in the, in the short run probably, and certainly in the long run, it would end up being a situation where you'd have potentially a trailer park. We're not Chino Valley.
Now, I saw the stuff in there from Chino Valley. They can stick a trailer park out in the wilderness and be happy about it. We can't do that, and we shouldn't do that.
Anything else? Any other questions from council? Actually, questions, questions what we're really in. Okay, so there's public comment on this. Do we have any forms on this one?
Katchikinsel? Good evening, council. Katchikinsel, 41200 North Echo Canyon Drive. And I was interested to see, um, code for recreational vehicles and things like that. If an RV recreational vehicle, boat, or trailer is located or stored outside of a garage or carport, it must be placed in the rear side yard within the buildable area of the parcel and buffered from view from abutting properties at ground level. If we're going to have these, this code for tiny homes, I would like to see them enforced at 41355 North Fleming Springs Road. Thank you.
Do we have any other? All right, so I get, this is kind of an open-ended thing here. Direct town manager worked with the town attorney to draft and ordinance to make it, take it to the planning commission for their review and recommendation. Do we have a motion? Now, if we make this motion and second it and then vote on it and pass it, then we're going to, what we're looking for is a way to enable these. If we just sit here and stare at each other and don't do anything, then we're just leaving the status quo as it is. Does anyone want to step out and make a motion? Is that the right way to do it, Mr. Sims?
It reaches the, the result you wish.
Moving on to agenda item number six. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Just a moment. It's not complete. Part of it was left out. If you look at agenda item number six, the end of it says revised general plan. We need to delete the period, and then it needs to say that accurately reflects the desires of the residents of Cave Creek.
Okay, we were actually on five there. Am I missing something? We were talking about the time. I'm sorry, it was, it was five, I'm sorry. Five. We're moving on to six then, which is the one I think you're looking at now. We're going to, we're going to get there now, so...
That was one part of it. So, that would make it be identical to the motion. Just the last sentence was left out. Did you get that yet?
On five?
On six.
No, we're not at six yet.
We're at five.
That was five that we just, that we just...
Just finished five.
What you're saying?
We just finished five. We're looking at...
You're telling me, you're telling me there's another... And that last sentence, that, that, yeah.
So, the end of number six.
Okay.
Revised general plan with the period. Delete the period and add that accurately reflects the desires of the residents of Cave Creek.
Okay.
It makes the wording the same as the motion itself.
That accurately...
Secondly, before we go on, I wanted to ask Carrie or Jane. I have been introducing agenda items since I came onto the council, and the majority of the time, I have typed them, put them together professionally. Occasionally, I give a handwritten note, but then the staff fixes it professionally. And I was wondering why that was not done with agenda item number six and seven, where they were convoluted and put together and not submitted in a packet in a professional manner. Oh, that's an aside. Okay, that's what I thought was...
Mayor, Councilwoman, it just was a matter of timing, that's all.
Say that again.
It was just a matter of timing of getting that packet put together. It was a very long, lengthy process to getting the packet put together. So, to make sure that the information was all complete rather than to, we didn't have the time to, to, we would have had to continue it to a different meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to go ahead and move on. I'm going to read this now. "Council discussion, possible action to reconstitute the planning commission with new commission members with the primary objective to prepare and submit to council a revised general plan that accurately reflects the desires of the town." Is that what you wanted on the end of it?
Excuse me, just turn the page.
Because my pen works.
That accurately reflects the desires of the residents of, of Cave Creek.
Okay, of the residents of the town of Cave Creek. All right, you put this on here.
Yes, I did. May I begin?
You may.
Okay, thank you. I brought this forward because I'm extremely concerned about what we're actually doing with the planning commission. We are now still using the 2005 general plan, which, which it was at one time an excellent plan, but now it's dated, it's 18 years old, and we have not gone forward. And the vision that's been pushed by the planning commission is basically not the vision of the residents of Cave Creek, because they have made that quite obvious. The planning commission submitted a flawed general plan in 2016, which was soundly defeated by the residents of Cave Creek. The planning commission then again submitted a flawed general plan to the residents of Cave Creek in 2018, which was also soundly defeated by the residents of Cave Creek. Based on these failures, the planning commission has currently constituted lax the ability to proceed and submit a revised general plan that the residents of the town will accept. We should reconstitute the planning commission with the new commission members with new eyes and ears and a new vision that will listen to the residents of Cave Creek and prepare and submit a general plan that will be approved by the residents. The past is the only true measure of performance. The planning commission may feel that there are reasons, excuses for this, but the bottom line is, they did not get the job done. With all due respect, we need a planning commission that will listen to the residents of Cave Creek. We need a planning commission that will set aside their egos. This last election, 1,000 Cave Creek residents rejected this plan. Obviously, the planning commission was not listening to the residents.
Mr. Mayor?
And Councilman Smith?
In the normal course of business, we would be appointing new planning commissioners in December. Right now, there are two commissioners that really did not have an opportunity to work on the general plan. They were appointed too late. Most of the work was done on the general, general plan in 2017. The two new commissioners did not have an opportunity to spend a lot of time on that. Additionally, there's a vacancy that's going to be filled fairly soon. And then there are going to be two, probably, possibly two, people who will be leaving the commission in December. That leaves only two commissioners that are on the existing planning commission. And, you know, if we're talking about firing two commissioners, which essentially is what we're doing, or considering, I don't think there's a value in it since we're five, essentially five new ones who did not have significant participation in development of the general plan. They will, the other ones will be gone. Also, from what I've seen tonight, when we reviewed two items that were developed and had gone past the planning commission, and we've seen other things that have gone past the planning commission, I think they do a fantastic job. What their responsibility is, is to gain information from people.
Is there a question in there?
Is there a question? Oh, I, I wasn't questioning.
Because that's where we're really at.
Oh, is this question time?
Yeah, it really should be, yeah.
So, the question?
Why, why would we, there's a question. Why would we eliminate a, a group of organization that has done a good job for the town, other than your feeling that they failed in the general plan? It, you know, I don't really see that there was a heck of a lot of difference between the original, the 2005 and the 2018 general plan. Certainly nothing that was all that negative. That's it. My question. That's always my question. Why are we doing this?
Do you have an answer?
Oh, I'm glad to, because they failed at their position. They have a task, and it's a major task, and they have failed. What I heard from you were your opinions. I don't know documentation about who's coming or going, who might come and go. This is a record that shows they have failed what the residents asked for, what they were, stood and listened here about for hours and hours. What the residents said they wanted, they did not perform. They did not perform the task that they were assigned, period. And I don't know who's coming, I don't know who's going, either do you for sure, unless the, unless the resignations have been turned in, unless something's taken place. So, those are opinions. Those aren't facts. These are facts. This shows very clearly, they did not get the job done. Now, we're still with the 2000, which is a fine plan.
Okay, I have another opinion, but I'll save it for opinion time.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this, this is only for questioning now, not comments.
Yeah, that's where we're at. We're in question. Comments are after, after emotion is, is made and seconded, so...
Right.
Tom, you got a question?
Yeah, Councilwoman Wright, is this... Yeah, Councilwoman Wright, is this general plan presented by the, to the voters by the planning commission, or is it presented to the voters by the council?
It's presented by the council, but the people per ARS right here that made the document are the planning commission. They're responsible for what it has, for the content.
Didn't this planning document come to the council for our working with it and approval?
No, it was to send it to the residents of the town.
There is public comment on this. Then we can have our discussion afterwards.
Robert Morris.
Well, Robert Morris, 620 East Sierra Run South, Cave Creek, Arizona, resident of the town here, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm, I'm against this. I think it is far too severe and it, it risks showing an incredible amount of ingratitude towards people who spent hundreds, if not thousands of hours, working for nothing on behalf of the town. I went to a number of the meetings, one of the few people in town. I heard no negative comments in the meetings I went to, other than on the water section, which I was there to represent. I think it's dangerous when, when you have people who are working honestly to try to do their best, which I think they did, and you just don't like the answer. We all have different opinions. This town runs on volunteers. We're seven, I'm looking at seven right now. And I think that to, to have the members dishonored and with the feeling of ingratitude, I don't think that's the best thing for the town. This town should be honoring them no matter what they came up with. It may not be good, but they should still be honored and treated with respect. I don't, I don't think this does, there's got to be a better way than this.
Mayor, members of council, Larry Went, Buffalo Chip Saloon, and my residence is at 6855 East Cave Creek. You know, I was going to get up here and kind of go along with your whole theme of, boy, this has been a nice meeting so far, and I was going to kind of stick with that by congratulating all the people that won, congratulating the person that lost, and he understands, but.
Thank you, I think.
Yeah, right. I'm going to say this about Ron Solva. I've been in this community since 1977. From incorporation on, I am going to say that Ron Solva was one of the best city council people that, that I ever had the opportunity of working with. He was thoughtful, fair, decisive, and while we may not have always hit on the same cylinder, we were running in the same direction, and I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
Now's where it gets ugly. I oppose this attempt at overturning the people's will. Eileen Wright, Mary Elrod, you have a responsibility as representative government to represent everybody in this town. That included businesses and that included residents. Everyone in this room has a stake in one, the other, or both of those areas. You chose not to even attend any type of forum to listen to what the businesses had to say. Mary Elrod, I understand it. You weren't running for anything. I, I understand why you wouldn't go listen to businesses. Eileen Wright, I do not. You didn't have my support before. You don't have my support on this. And here is the crux of the issue. You sit there and say that the people spoke and that someone needs to listen. The people spoke, and I don't think it's right for you, on your way out, to try and ramrod something like this down businesses, homeowners, and as the other gentleman said, people that have put a lot of time into it. That's all I've got.
Katja Kinsel, Cave Creek resident. Sorry, Larry, you kind of mixed apples with oranges. You were talking about elections. This is about the planning commission.
No, that was an election. She was unelected.
That has nothing to do with the planning commission reconfigured, being reconfigured at this time. I had been to almost every single workshop concerning the general plan for both the 2016 and the 2018 general plan. I recall that there was a letter written to the planning commission from 19 prior elected and appointed officials. They did not like the tone of the general plan and the direction it was going. That letter was addressed back by the planning commission, item by item, but that was never brought onto the record. Here were people that set up this town to be fruitful going forward, and I believe, Mr. McGuire, you talk to every single one of those 19 people. That was a bit out of line. I have worked a long time on the general plan. I have put forth my ideas, and so have a number of other citizens. Citizens that put ideas towards the 28, no, you can't do that.
If you're personally attacked, you may respond.
I would like to respond.
I made a statement, that, that's all.
Let her finish.
Why don't you let her finish?
Let her finish.
Then you can respond.
That would be nice. The citizens' positions in the 2016 general plan were somewhat integrated in, you know that, David, Mr. Smith, excuse me, and back that many years ago, we wanted the land use map to match the zoning map. Well, that's been a hard fight, but apparently it was done for the 2018 general plan that the voters voted down. They voted down the entire document, but parts of that document can be resurrected. But I just, I want to say that David, Minister, Councilman Smith, your ideas were correct about, there are only going to be two council people left, but who else knows that? That there are going to be more leaving? That, that should be shared information.
Three minutes.
Not at, not at a point like this, anyway. I just hope that a planning commission can be selected that will provide a document with all of the citizens and not only some of the citizens, but they are not driven by the department, but driven by the citizens and what they see their goal is 10 years from now. Thank you.
Councilman McGuire.
I treasure the ability to speak to our citizens. I did contact a number of those people, and it was to have a dialogue with those people so that I better understood what they were going to do. I do not want to have my ability to speak to any of you interrupted by the feelings of one person.
And may I be next, Mayor, since I was also personally attacked by Mr. Went?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Went, you are incorrect. The very first forum was at a bar. I was in attendance.
It was not for the businesses. Don't distort it. It was not for the businesses.
Can we not do this, please?
Okay, and then, we're talking about not an election, we're talking about a general plan that the citizens of this town defeated. They chose, yeah, they had defeated it. That's what we're talking about. We need to get a general plan that the residents will, will like, that they will accept. That's the point here, to get citizens that are listening to the residents of this town that will accept a general plan. That's the goal. It has nothing to do about an election or anything else like that. And bottom line is, I'm not sure what you were talking about, what forum. The only forum I did not attend was the last one, and I had turned in a complaint with the sheriff's office because my life had been threatened and I chose not to attend. That's the bottom line, Mr. Went.
You also didn't answer questions, and that's why the businesses.
And that's my choice.
Yeah.
That's my choice.
Yeah, please, let's not do this.
No, and that's my choice.
Are there any more comments? Comments from anyone? Okay, we're.
I didn't file a paper, but if I might speak.
Well, I guess you can do that, Mr. Bissour. You always bring such enlightened comments to us.
Well, I'll give it my best shot. My name is Bill Bissour. I live at 2415 East Rockaway Hills Road, a Cave Creek resident. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, all members of the council. I still admire all of you for what you do, and congratulations to everybody, and, you know, things fell where they did. But there is a saying here that success has many fathers and failure is an orphan. And I think if you try too hard to attach this failure to somebody, you're doing them a disservice. I did attend the planning commission meetings. I attended every time it was in front of this council, and I made a suggestion that you guys might remember, which was that the U.S. Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and the Declaration of Independence would have only taken up a couple of pages relative to the tone, this volume we put out. And I think that if we looked at the statute and did what the statute said, and I don't know if he's allowed to do this, but Mr. Solva, would you mind repeating one more time what exactly the general plan is? Because you put it more succinctly than anybody. If he can't do it, I'll try and do it.
I'll try to remember what I said. I think I was trying to say that it's a vision for the future for our town that's required by state law every 10 years. It is not a policy, it is not an ordinance, and it is not a law. It's a vision. And under the Arizona revised statutes, if you're a town between 2,500 to 10,000 people, you follow it with seven elements. If you're larger, there's a lot more to it. Our general plan follows those seven elements. I'm a little bit on a tangent here, so stop me if you want to, or Mr. Sims.
Should I stop him?
No, no, roll.
But I, I agree with you on your comments relative to the Constitution of the United States, the amendment, and the Bill of Rights. That is still a document that, I'm not good at math, that's 240-plus years old, and we still follow it every day in this country and every city and town. And it still works. And I contend that, and I've heard a lot about, it shouldn't be shorter. And perhaps it could, because it's my feeling, being in business, that the longer something is, the more you say, the more you open yourself up. I think I've said too much.
Yeah, I apologize. Well, actually, you nailed it, because I, my comment here, what I'm suggesting, is that perhaps that whatever makeup of the commission it might be, that if they were directed to more closely follow the statute, to keep it from becoming a wish list, to really do it in the way that the law says it should be done, and then please, dear God, hire a copy editor, okay? We did have the benefit of Thomas Jefferson. I don't think he's working for the town right now, so, you know, we might have to do something. But I really think that a lot of the reason that it did not pass was not because of ill will on the part of anybody trying to do it. It became too big, too cumbersome, too hard to understand, and people were fearful about what might be there. And so they, they won't vote for what they don't, don't understand. So that's, that's what I would like to say. Thank you.
We are now back to council. I'm assuming that someone's going to make a motion.
I move to remove. I move to remove current planning commission members and reconstitute the planning commission with new commission members with the primary objective to prepare and submit to the council a revised general plan that accurately reflects the desires of the residents of Cave Creek.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Councilwoman Wright?
Did you want any? Oh, I thought you were talking to. No, the point of this is that we need to get a general plan that the residents of the town will support, that they will be pleased with, and that's the point of this. And with two failures, it has not happened. So it is time then to make some adjustments, to uncover some of the issues, and to move forward.
Councilwoman Elrod, you had the second.
I agree with Councilwoman Wright on this. The people have spoken by their vote, and as council, we are responsible to respond to what the people are requesting. They're not happy with this, and we have to put people first.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Solva.
I have some comments.
I'm sure you do.
If I were a current sitting member of the plan commission, I would be highly insulted tonight to take a volunteer's time, and I agree with Councilman-elect Morris with his statements, to spend hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours of your time, staff time, and more importantly, the residents of this town going to plan commission hearings, meetings, work-study sessions, to voice what they would like to see in the plan, and now to ignore that. Highly insulting. The other issues are that what happens when you have citizens, a sampling of 10 people, five want Plan A, five want Plan B? How do you accommodate both? You're going to get five people to approve it, five people to not approve it. And I think, and I've been, I didn't go to all the study sessions and all the meetings. I went to enough to realize that we have volunteers and we have people on the plan commission, and I was at one of them where Mr. Dan Baxley was presiding over it, and he called everybody in the audience. People had the ability to speak, make their thoughts known, they were recorded, and I am quite sure the members of the plan commission and the planning staff take that to heart. And then I just, to be, to have something come up called reconstituting, you want to fire the plan commission. How do you expect this town to try and get volunteers for commissions and committees in the future when you take these people and they spend hundreds of hours working on something free of charge, taking their evenings and afternoons and donating their time, and the reward is to get fired? And that's why it will be difficult to get people to volunteer. I agree with Mr. Morris. We should be putting accolades their way, and I will give you mine. Thank you for the time. their way. And I will give you mine. Thank you for the time it took that you put in to go through this, to listen to the residents of the town. And in regards to comments we got, let's put it in proper timing. A lot of the comments we got were at the 11th hour, after the Plan Commission had spent a year to a year and a half going through this, and then it came to the town council, in which we had not one, but two, as I recollect, work-study sessions. And I believe that in one of those work-study sessions, we had a full complement of the Plan Commission here. And I was up here trying to get all the council members to come up with their objections as to why the plan was flawed, and it wasn't working that way. People wanted to leave. They wanted to go home. They wanted to come back later. That was the time to take action, and nothing was done. And then, now to come back and say it's flawed. The people on the Plan Commission are not elected, they're appointed. And now that you're threatening or calling forth to fire the people that brought us this far, as I say, is an insult. And I don't know how you're going to get 50% of the people wanting A, 50% B. You've got to negotiate. I'll agree with that. I've said that before. It's the art of negotiation. What can somebody give up and somebody put in? And the art, and I've said this before, of negotiation is not having one side do all the giving and the other side doing all the taking. It has to be a group made up of sane, sensible, rational human beings willing to negotiate, willing to have a little skin in the game, and give and take. If we could do that, and I think the Plan Commission members had that in mind as best they could, and then to be presented at the 11th hour lists of what we like and don't like, where were these people? Where was that petition? Where were these objections 12 to 18 months ago? They didn't exist. So, again, I will give you my apologies, Mr. Morris, and the members out there. I don't think this is right. I will certainly not support it. And I'll let Mr. Smith speak now.
Councilman Smith.
Thank you.
Is there anything left?
I've actually given most of my opinion on this. I agree that we probably should give a little more direction from the council as to how the Planning Commission should go about doing the next general plan. And my direction would be, as it has been identified by a couple of people who spoke tonight, start with the basics. What does the law say is the minimum? And then, determine whether anything actually needs to be added to that. If it doesn't, go with the minimum, and you can probably get away with 20 pages or even less. But to get back to this question itself, as I mentioned before, we're only going to have two people on the Planning Commission at the end of this year that were the most deeply involved in developing the proposed general plan. That means there are two people who came on in, say, January of this year, and then, another three people who will be brand-new that didn't participate in that. So, we're essentially going to have a substantial turnover in the Planning Commission. And I think that that's the right way to do it. That will enable the new people who are going to be on the council to have input on who is going to be put on to the, added to the commission, and I think that's what's appropriate. We shouldn't be doing something with the council where there are members that are going to be leaving.
Councilwoman Clancy?
I think most of it's been said. I think you articulated it beautifully. I think I sat, and I think Tom and I probably in the very beginning, I want to say, three years ago, I think I sat through every single one of them. And I remember someone on commission coming up to me and asking me, "Why are you sitting here?" And I said, "Because I want to see the process. I want to see what you're doing. I want to understand what you're doing." And I said, "And it's also a delight to hear a group of individuals being able to take the time to express themselves." I think I saw them spend about an hour and a half on the word "Western," and I thought it was well worth listening, because if you knew step-by-step what they went through on each point, you might understand better that what is being proposed is such a slap in the face. I went to every open meeting, and citizens who weren't even in our town got up and made suggestions, and they took that into consideration. I think if it became a little more, a little larger in pages, that was to take into the accommodations of those who came and wanted things in there or considered to have things in there. And based on the information you have given us, even if it weren't just two, I can't even imagine doing that to a group of individuals who have given their time, their passion, and their love for this town in trying to accommodate everyone. And council probably is the one who failed in accordance with, if there were things, and I think both of you brought it up, that were so difficult to understand or needs to be added or taken out, it certainly didn't come through in our meetings as well. So, I think we also ought to remember that the Planning Commission doesn't just do the general plan every multiple, what is it, every three to four years or whatever it is. There are also that help on our council when it comes to, well, some of the things we just approved that have Jiffy Lube, and I've sat through those meetings, and I see Tom at those meetings as well. The sobermen living, the things that came up there, they are between us and protecting our town. Their first goal, when they sit there, is to protect us from a lawsuit, and they take that very seriously. If we even are going to be lucky enough when these vacancies open up to have half the passion we have on that commission right now, we would be a very blessed town. So, I too am not in favor of this.
Councilwoman McGuire?
I would like to note that Councilwoman Clancy and I did not sit together. We were not talking and did not participate.
That's true.
We did not participate. We were there to observe what the Planning Commission was doing. We were there to observe the process, and I believe that what you did was professionally done. You were open to the input that came from the citizens. It, Councilwoman Wright, it's true. It did fail. But I think that the responsibility does not belong with the Planning Commission. It belongs both with us and those who did not give us the input that we needed.
In 13 years, sitting on this dais up here, you've had your say. In 13 years of sitting on this dais up here, this is the most insulting issue that has ever come before this council. We have people who have dedicated their time and effort and energy into bringing forth a general plan. Unfortunately, it failed. We did have two workshops. The first workshop, because I knew that Councilwoman Wright wanted her way with the thing, she sat next to me, and we went through the thing page by page, and I kept looking, "Are you okay with that page? Are you okay with that page?" We changed many things. So, the night that we passed this on to the voters and she declared it a flawed document, I was really quite shocked at that point in time, because I thought, while I couldn't support it because of the things I allowed to happen to it, I thought it was kind of amazing that, since she got most of her way in it, that she wasn't going to support it. At this point in time, it's time for a vote. All those who fear the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So, it looks like 7-0. This thing failed. If there's any conversation because of the new state law, do we need to do...
Jane has to assume that we're going to have this vote, so all be reported as nay.
And that is not correct.
Okay, then we have to vote. Jane, call a roll call, please.
Nay, I do not support this item.
Councilwoman Wright?
Yes.
Councilwoman Elrod?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solva?
No.
Councilman Smith?
No.
Councilwoman Clancy?
In good mind, no.
Mayor Bunch?
No. My 5-2 motion fails. 2-5, whichever way. Agenda item number seven, council discussion approval of Resolution R. 2018-18 to amend the 2005 general plan to incorporate the land use map that clearly depicts DR. 190, DR. 89, DR. 70, and DR. 43 attached as Exhibit A placed on the agenda by Councilwoman Wright and Councilwoman Elrod. However, I believe that there is a notation in here from Mr. Cordwell. Would you like to tell us about it? Or should I, Mr. Sims, should I allow the people that put on here to speak first, or do I...
They may propose that they should speak first.
Okay, go right ahead. Councilwoman Wright?
Thank you. Okay, the 2005 general plan land use map does not accurately depict the land use patterns of DR. 190, 89, 70, or 43. And it's very important that we clarify this and accurately depict the four separate land use patterns. This land use map should be incorporated into the 2005 general plan. It will protect our large parcel residential zoning and land use patterns. And a comment that is made under Mr. Cordwell's memo on page 126 of 128 states wherein the 2005 land use map addresses all four desert rural zones under one desert rural land use category, as has been the case since the creation of desert rural zone. This is incorrect. Desert rural zone in 1993 was completely separate. It was first, there was a category called desert country, which was a maximum of one dwelling unit per 190,000 square feet. Number two, desert rural, maximum of one dwelling unit per 70,000 square feet. So, it was divided out onto individual particular areas. So, it's very important that we have that if we're going to protect our large parcel zoning.
We did not have desert rural DR. 70 until after the annexation of Spurcross.
In 1993, it says right here. I'm looking at the document.
It did not exist in the town's 1994 zoning map.
Well, it hasn't always, I mean, you said it's always been all four of them, correct? And that would not be correct.
Since desert rural zones have been created...
You said all four desert rural zones under one desert rural land use category has been the case ever since the creation of desert rural zones.
You can omit that sentence if you wish.
Say that again.
You can omit that sentence if you wish. It makes you feel better.
No, but that was just to show there was desert rural was separate, as it clearly shows on the Town of Cave Creek's general plan 2005. It shows desert rural as a separate category, desert rural maximum one dwelling unit per 70,000 square feet. But the point is, that's not the point. The point is, they need to be individual, four individual DR. 190, 89, 70, and 43 to protect our large parcel zoning, which is an important part of our town.
Now, Mr. Cordwell, would you like to put your... I'll read the rest of the memo. Arizona State Law 9-461.05 General Plan's authority scope prescribes in part that "The general plan shall include provisions that identify changes or modifications to the plan that constitute amendments and major amendments. The 2005 general plan was adopted and ratified with the condition that all major amendments for any change to the general plan are to be processed after April 1st of each calendar year. The suggested motion is to direct staff to initiate a major amendment to the general plan amending the land use map. Said case would be processed after April 1st, 2019, with a 60-day enhanced notification process prior to a public hearing by the Planning Commission developing a recommendation to the town council, not by resolution." Vice Mayor Solva, I'm sure you have a question or two.
I have a comment.
Oh, no, no comments. We're in question mode right now. We're going to try and run this meeting the right way. Question from council. Councilman McGuire?
Mr. Cordwell, does the law require that our general plan have a land use map and land use descriptions?
Mayor, members of council, Councilman McGuire, yes.
Would you please distinguish between a land use map and a zoning map?
A land use map in general describes things such as residential versus commercial. Cave Creek is unique in that we have desert rural land use. A zoning map calls out the zones within each of those land uses. Commercial land use has three zones within it. Medium-density land use has two zones within it, R. 18 and R. 35. We have medium-density land use. We have multiple residents within that. Desert rural is one land use with four zones within it. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Solva.
I'll take what was going to be my comment and make it as a question.
Good job.
Thank you. Mr. Cordwell, wouldn't it be appropriate, instead of having this item on here before us today, to not take action on it, but wait until the Plan Commission gets direction from perhaps the new town council in preparation of putting together a new general plan and discuss it at those hearings, study sessions before the Plan Commission, as well as the town council, as opposed to treating it piecemeal beforehand? This way, the residents of the town will be able to be heard and voice their objections or the reasons they're for something like this, and it would be totally transparent with the residents of our town given full and complete opportunity to be part of the new general plan.
Vice Mayor Solva, I agree with your very long question. That was impressive.
Very good, very good.
Any other question from...
I have one for Mr. Cordwell. What are the business implications if we move forward with this in having a breakdown of the very specific DRs in the general plan versus leaving it the way it is now with desert rural as a generalized topic?
Councilman Smith, members of council, what this would do is add a step to property owners of desert rural to follow both a general plan amendment and a rezone when they wish to change, whereas now desert rural land use covers four zones within it. If someone wishes to rezone their property from, say, five acre to one acre, they would be required to hold a neighborhood meeting with their neighbors in the surrounding area, and they would have to get past their neighbors before they concurrently, they could change, they wouldn't need to change the general plan, they would need to rezon the property. So, there's still a step in place that goes through a public process and is still subject to referendum.
Except it's a two-step process instead of a single-step process.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cordwell, how many general plans in the state are you aware of that have this actually done, what's being requested tonight? None that I'm aware of. Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Wright, is your hand up?
Pardon me?
I see, is your hand up?
Is my head up?
I see, was your hand up, or were you just holding the pencil?
Oh, no, I was holding my thing, but the very, just something that Mr. Solva just said, something about piecemeal, and that is not what this is at all. An individual element of the general plan can be taken, and this map is an individual element. So, it's not, the word is not piecemeal.
Okay, Mr. Sims?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, by conflating the zoning process with the planning process, you are demonstrating a symptom that Mr. Bessor and the vice mayor commented upon, and that was overly making your general plan far more complex than it has to be. The land use entitlement process in Arizona is a classic example of participatory democracy. And you go from the extreme, the two extremes. When you talk... When you talk general plan, that's Jefferson, that's France, that's participatory democracy, the voters get to vote. And when you come down the spectrum to zoning, it becomes more difficult for the voters to vote because Adams, one of the Republicans, wanted you, the representatives, to act on behalf of the constituents. So by making your planning process a zoning process, you insinuate the voters need to be involved with the planning process. When you go from planning to zoning to subdivision to site plan to building permit approval, the voters have far less responsibility and roles as they get down the spectrum. You and staff have a much larger role. This works across the state. And I think if you could try to make your general plan, because Jefferson wanted the public to share your vision. So by law, they get to vote, and they have to vote every 10 years. The more you burden it with zoning, water planning, I mean, when I look at your general plan, it is unbelievable what's in there. Few governments go to that complexity, and that's one reason you may have had it defeated. The goal would be to challenge you as the elected officials relying on the planning agency through your planning commission to develop something that you then can recommend, and then the voters get to vote. Once they vote, now you're at planning. Planning and zoning, voters don't get to vote unless it's referred. When you get down to site plan, they don't even get to refer. When you get down to building permit, they don't get to refer. Government works quite well when we identify the role of the voter. The voter is classic at the plan, not involved at site plan, and can only be involved via referendum in planning and zoning. What you have done is you've made your planning document, in effect, the Sears-Rove catalog of everything in government. And you need to move away from that and have a true planning document. That's what Jefferson would want. That's what the voters get to vote on, and then Adams is going to hold you responsible to make sure it's implemented correctly.
I'd like to make a statement to that.
Statement or question?
We're still in questions?
Yeah, we really are. If you can phrase it as a question.
I know that. I didn't even question it. Yes.
Well, he's lecturing us, but he's our attorney. There is a public comment on this one.
Mayor, members of council, Larry Wendt, Buffalo Chip Saloon, Cave Creek resident. Hey, first of all, I'm not a big attorney fan, but my God, you might, and you knocked it out of the park. Yeah, you better get in there now. Again, and I didn't know a lot about either one of these proposals. I did know this. I, as a business person, had no input into the going after changing it. And so I do not support it. I agree with keeping it simple, keeping it basic. I normally don't talk about my voting. I voted against the general plan because it was too complicated. I couldn't understand it. And rather than run with something I didn't know and vote to change it, I tried to stay with what we had in place. So thank you, council members, that included input from both residents and businesses. Thank you.
We are back to council. I'm assuming that someone wants to make a motion?
Yes, I will. Motion to approve of resolution number R 2018-18, a resolution of the mayor and town council of the Town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, to amend the general plan to incorporate the land use map that clearly depicts DR 190, DR 89, DR 70, and DR 43 attached as Exhibit A to be processed after April 1st, 2019.
Second.
Councilwoman Wright, you had the motion?
Yes. And I basically said it all. It's very important to have our land, our land use map very clearly depict our difference. The difference between DR 190 and DR 43 is huge, so.
Councilwoman Elrod, you had the second?
I think Councilwoman Wright clearly stated exactly what I was going to say. It's important to have our land use map be clear for all our residents, and I'm in support of this.
Councilman McGuire?
Mr. Cordwell did an excellent job of distinguishing between what is a land use map and what is a zoning map. I think council, Mr. Sims, helped to show what that difference is. The Planning Commission did exactly what we expected of them. And some. They were open, and they were professional. Did the plan pass? No, it didn't pass. And we need to go back to a process that will allow that to occur. We need to listen to Mr. Wendt, as always. And we need to listen to Mr. Smith, who has made a suggestion that I believe will help to produce a document that the voters can approve. But I ask the voters, please, give us input that will help us respond to your desires.
Councilwoman Clancy?
I believe that the complexities that came out in this plan were partially due a great deal of the public input and commission taking it hard to consider what everyone had suggested, even right down to the 19, some people who sent in at the last second their dislike for it. So I believe that we are where we are, and I believe that Tom made it very simple and quite clear, the difference between the two, so.
Councilman Smith? I'm sorry, were you done?
I am.
Okay. Councilman Smith?
Thank you. This is one of the items in the proposed general plan with which I was not happy. I believe it would add a necessary step to any process of modifying desert rural. And sometimes desert rural does need to be modified, both for business purposes. Somebody wants to take a 10-acre lot and cut it into two five-acre lots. There's perfectly good reasons to do things like that. It shouldn't be something where you duplicate the requirements simply to slow down the
Vice Mayor Solva?
I'm always anxious to come to a town council meeting to hear the fine words of our town attorney. And I was not disappointed tonight. You were very eloquent in your history lesson, and congratulations. Job well done, Mr. Sims.
We're going to miss you.
Aye, we will.
The issue before us is primarily the reason I did not vote for the general plan myself. There were several other things that were placed in there by people who were working the Planning Commission. And there's no way that I'm going to support this tonight. So let's go ahead, and all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Okay, let's do a roll call.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Clancy?
No.
Councilman McGuire?
No.
Councilwoman Wright?
Yes.
Councilwoman Elrod?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solva?
No.
Councilman Smith?
No.
Mayor Bunch?
No. By 5-2, motion fails. I've moved the council request for future agenda items to the last thing on here because I want to make a couple of comments. The way our rules are written is two council members may request an item that may be put on a future agenda by either the mayor or the town manager. I've not seen any of these prior to this now. I'm going to be a little reticent to add anything else when we're spending time doing things that I believe is a waste of time. Having said that, any requests for future agenda items?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to make a short briefing on water at the next meeting on documentation I have gotten from going to seminars from CAP and the Arizona Department of Water Resources.
Okay. See there, you specified the next meeting, and that's not actually allowed. That's up to myself or the town manager. We will take that under advisement. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Some of.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.